All right, hello everyone. Elaine, can you give me a head nod if you can hear me clearly? All right, the camera's in a new location today, so.
Jordan, did you send Nick an invite? I sent him a copy of mine.
Hi Elaine, this is Hector. We did send Nick a panel's invite just a couple of minutes ago, so it should be in his inbox.
Great, thank you.
All right, folks are popping in. I have to admit to you all the Zoom stuff, I'm so used to my camera being from below. Like, I'm like seeing parts of myself I haven't seen in years right now. My left ear really look like that? And Mayor, I know Counselor Clark cannot be here tonight, and I am unsure about Counselor Byers.
Counselor Clark is here.
You're thinking of Counselor Prestizo. I think you are.
Sorry, everyone, turns out my volume was on mute, so if any of you talked in the last five minutes, I did not hear it.
Counselor Clark is here, Counselor Prestizo is not going to be here. And actually, I am going to hand the gavel over to Clark, just because I'm still kind of rough.
And how about Counselor Byers? Anyone?
I think she told, I think she told us very early on that she was not going to be here.
Okay, all right, all right, so then it seems like everyone else is present. So I will call this joint work session of the Talent City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent to order at 4:33 on June 17, 2022. Roll call, please.
Member Prenemroff.
Here.
Member Greider.
Here.
Member Prestizo's absent, member Byers is absent, member Parry Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Clark.
Here.
And Chair Ayers Flood.
Here.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Great. And so do we have, do we have an agenda? Jordan?
It's quick and easy, item number two is work session.
Okay.
These questions, and item number four is adjournment.
Okay, well, let's move on to item number two, the work session. I see Mayor Ayers Flood has a question.
Hey, Jordan, were we going to discuss the letter at this meeting?
No, I have that set for our Tuesday meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm still getting some information together for that one.
Thank you. Hey, Jordan, can we, can we put that at the end of today's, the end of tonight's meeting? Just, I think I have some suggestions, I would rather, I mean, I'm happy to talk about them ahead of time, that's what I'd rather do. So that you, so that when the letter comes before us, we can, we can look at the actual draft, but I'd be happy to talk about that on Monday if you'd prefer.
Um, no, let's, let's go ahead and have that space here if we have time at the end of the work session.
Okay.
And if not, we can push it to next week if we want to have time, but I think we'll have ample time.
Thank you, Jordan.
Of course.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair.
And I actually do have a question for the mayor, since we're doing a joint session. I don't know, do we need to also call roll call from the council perspective?
We do. Oh, so Eleanor will take the gavel for the council's piece.
So I get to say roll call, please?
Call, call the council meeting to order and then.
Oh, oh, very good, okay, so I call this joint work session for the county, for the, for the Talent City Council to order. Today's June 17, 2022, and the time is 4:36 PM, roll call, please.
Counselor Prenemroff.
Here.
Counselor Greider.
Here.
Counselor Prestizo's absent, Counselor Byers is absent, Counselor Parry Miller.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Okay, there is a quorum of counselors.
Mayor, your hand is still up, do you have another comment? Okay.
Apology.
No worries. So on to the work session then, Jordan?
Great, thank you so much. All right, we'll dive right in, happy Friday, everyone, by the way. Thanks for being here on a Friday afternoon. I want you guys to know, we're calling this joint session today so that you can be wearing both your urban renewal hat as well as your city council hat today. So please feel free to ask questions from any perspective throughout this session. Today is just really a work session to just help you all with some, pardon me, provide you all some information and context. Recognizing that next week the Tura Board will be making some policy decisions around the next steps of the work plan. And just to help fill you in on our recovery process in general. And I'm also hoping to use this time in a session together to identify what additional information you all are looking for to help make your decisions. You know, really good information often just gets more questions, and so staff is here to support finding the answers to those questions. For when you make your decisions, you are fully informed. I do have a couple asks during this specific meeting, you know, for council members, board members, please interrupt me throughout the presentation. These slides are going to have a lot of data, they're going to be really dense, I threw them together today. So I want to make sure everyone has a strong understanding of what they say, so that as you're thinking about this later on, the information sticks. And then to the experts in the room, you know, to Nick, to Kristen, to Elaine, my ask to you all is please interrupt me if I get anything wrong. You know, I would say my complete hats off to Nick and Elaine, who have been working nonstop with me this past week to get me up to speed and to answer all of my questions. So of course, if I make a mistake, please go ahead and step in for the sake of clarity. For those of you that feel comfortable with it, I just asked you to keep your cameras on today so that I can have a sense of how the information is coming across, if I'm going too fast, if I'm going too slow. All of that just helps me see faces. And the mayor, we will excuse you, it's no fun to be on camera in four tissues deep. Okay, so what are we going to talk about today? Um, you know, something that Kristen and I have really been working hard on is to help get more of an understanding of the rebuild that is going on, on the ground. Where it's growing great and where it's falling short. Then I want to talk a little bit about city resources and city uses, particularly how property taxes inform what we do. How those resources are expected to change with the urban renewal proposal. And then something that I was hoping to present today was really how does our urban renewal overlap or not overlap with other recent urban renewals for small cities? Nick and Elaine passed along some awesome information to me. I was not able to get it prepared in time to put into this PowerPoint, so if that's of interest, let me know, and I can share that out later. And then, of course, what options are ahead and next steps. Any questions on meeting flow? Okay, good. We're going to dive straight into data, and this is going to be just an info-heavy meeting, but what you're looking at here is a screenshot from an ArcGIS dashboard that shows all of the buildings that were destroyed in the Alameda fire here in Talent. You know, red means completely destroyed, that kind of pea soup green means survived, though it was in the burnt scar. Orange means heavy damaged, yellow is minor damage, and all the purple you see are just building outlines. If you see purple, it means that those homes were not in the burn scar and are still intact. So really, um, in total, you know, the county estimates that there were 690 residential structures that were damaged or destroyed. I really want to emphasize what structure means. Structure means a building. It could have multiple homes in the same building, it could have multiple apartments. But there's a lot of different numbers out there from homes to structures, and we're specifically talking about building structures today. And along with that were 64 commercial structures that were destroyed or had major damages. So some really ample, some ample destruction that we are all so well aware of that occurred back in September 2020.
Question?
Yeah.
So those numbers were just for the city of, within the city limits of Talent? Or, okay, thanks.
But here we are, almost two years later, and we have had some really hope-inspiring rebuild going on in our town. So what you see here, everything in red outline was destroyed but is not back in place. Everything in the bright green outline is a fully rebuilt structure. And then everything in the pea soup green, which must be the color of the month, has a permit pulled, but that permit isn't finalized yet. So it's probably in the process of rebuilding. What does this visual, what do these numbers show us? Is that 98 of the structures have been rebuilt and have had their certificate of occupancy, pardon me. And folks are reusing those structures again. 177 structures have active permits pulled. And we know, you know, on our side right now, we have nine live apps that we are processing to hopefully move to an active permit. So looking at these static numbers, looking at this map, that means 38% of our destroyed structures are rebuilt or in the rebuilding process. That number is a little bit of a misnomer because of the way that we're counting structures. Oh, this one got cut off a bit, folks, sorry about that. So what I'm pointing out to here is just some specific areas in the map where the map doesn't tell the whole story. For example, back here, all of this red, this is our Mountain View Estates manufactured home park. Mountain View Estates is fully operational and fully ready to have manufactured homes on the ground and people living in them. The issue is the supply chain around manufactured homes. The owner of this park is buying homes himself to place on the lot, and he's trying to find them anywhere he can to put them there. So while these are all red, you know, what we're really waiting on here, there's 160 spaces right now that are available for folks to hopefully find a home and place it on the property. Yeah, Mayor?
Yep, thank you, Jordan. So my understanding is that the park is also requiring homeowners to build their own pad? And is that still the, still the case? Has that changed?
I'll have to follow up on that one, Kristen, do you, do you know the actual park regulations they're using?
Right. I'm not certain, I mean, everybody in the park is, is it's up to them whether they want to construct their, put their own manufactured home on, but I know the owner is putting a number of manufactured homes on to rent out, but they're, they all have to go on their own path, so I'm not sure what you're referring to the, other than, yes, they will all need to be placed on, on a, yeah, some sort of foundation system.
I could actually ask a more clear question, I apologize. My understanding of this, what is, what is really the impediment of, of a quick recovery is that they're requiring site development at each pad. And I, and I, my, I don't have a clear understanding of this, and this could have changed, but I understand that Pam Marsh had got, or, you know, Oregon Representative Marsh has been in some discussions, but my understanding was what was holding up the development of that park is also that people are not wanting to come back and pay the pet, the, the cost of, of reconstructing the pad. So I just wanted to find out where we're at with that, but we can certainly answer that at another time if nobody, if there's not an update. It may have been resolved, I don't know.
All I know is they're going through a standard building permit process that we require all manufactured homes to go through when they're placed on a foundation.
So then that would indicate maybe that there are permits that are being pulled.
Yes.
There are a lot of, so how many permits are pulled waiting for a manufactured home?
In, in, in Mountain View?
I think that's a good example, yes.
I think Jordan has that number there.
I would say roughly 30, but I will follow up with the exact number.
Yeah, I believe there's, yeah, I think we've, yeah, I'll have to check, I don't know the exact amount, well, you can look on their, our numbers from last month, I think, we steadily get them in every, every month.
Great, thank you, that, that helps me.
But that's really the point, Mayor, I was trying to make, so I appreciate that, is each manufactured home individually goes for its own permit.
That's correct.
And so the same scenario, though, it sounds like a little different than maybe why the barriers are occurring. This is our Wagner Creek Estates mobile home park, you all come to my mouse, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, so this is similarly, you know, from the park side of things, they have their permit in, and they just need to get permits for the homes that would be placed. We do see a lot of RVs living in those spaces instead of manufactured home parks. But that is another fully operational part from the terms of the park perspective.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if in the, at a future time, we can know how many permits have been pulled for each one of these parks?
Yeah, we actually have that data and can share that, so I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let me just make a quick note. And I just wanted to let you all, I hope, know this, but now with some great news is that Casa went ahead and received funding from HCS to purchase the talent mobile estates. So we look forward to working with them as they go through their permitting process, so we do expect this manufactured home park to have full rebuild as well. And then the other thing, you know, just to know, looking at this map, is this is all permits only. What, what was also really fun behind the scenes is the amount of planning that's going on that folks do prior to going through the permit process. And so we'll share a little bit more of those planning numbers overall. Actually, I don't have that detail specifically here, but I will say if all of these manufactured homes are able to get up and running within the next year and a half, and for all the projects in the workplace, that we do expect to see 75% of our lost structures recovered within the next year and a half. So really, for me, this is a huge ray of sunshine and hope. We are recovering at a four-time faster rate than FEMA's estimate for natural disasters. So a really great evidence of just really solid teamwork and focus from so many different partners from the federal level down to the local level. The other part about the rebuild story that these maps aren't able to show is that we're seeing a lot more density occurring in the rebuild. So of our single-family homes, we, seven of them have turned into duplexes now. 25 ADUs have been added that weren't there before the fire. Some vacant lots are now being built, one vacant lot is now a duplex, there's now 12 single-family homes. And we expect 90 units of multifamily to come in. And what's really great about these 90 units is that they are all earmarked as affordable housing. That 72-unit building with Commonwealth. And then another 18 to 20-unit senior affordable housing being done as a private project. We also, pardon my list here, we've also had a lot of lot changes. Some developers have been particularly active in the cluster cottage approach. But we've had enough lot changes that we now will have 19 additional lots in Talent that weren't there prior to the fire. And what we're seeing happening commercials, we're seeing a lot of mixed use go in where buildings were burnt, Stop Fitness, for example, will have mixed use on top, Good Night Inn, that'll have commercial on the bottom and mixed use on top. And then we're seeing some commercial newbuild. So in all this density is that we expect to see 169 more residential units than we had before the fire. And currently, we expect to have 21,100 square feet of commercial space increase. I will say, the majority of that square footage increase is storage unit facilities, which tend to take up more space than a typical office building. You know, all of that is really great, things that our community has really wanted to import on our rebuild and increasing density. But there are areas that are not bouncing back. I highlighted a couple on here, just to point out and discuss. You know, our commercial core downtown, we're seeing very little movement. We're excited for the Malcolm Garage, we're excited for Talent Maker City, but beyond that, it's been pretty stagnant, and we haven't had much interest coming into our development department to talk about potential or ideas. So this is an area that could really use some, some boost. Up here, this is a property that Catholic Charities was originally interested in, they ultimately couldn't make the cost work. But there's been little to no movement for these buildings here, which are right next to the senior living next door. This area right here, I've highlighted, this is Anderson Vista, this was previously affordable farmworker housing that has stalled just due to some USDA grant deed restrictions going on, still a work in progress, but it will likely need some sort of support from either the city level or some other level to help get that back up and housing folks. We have another commercial cluster right here, this is where like AA, I think it was AA Insulation. I forget what other businesses were here. But that has burnt down, and we've had no interest, no movement in, in rebuilding, I think it's owned by three separate property owners, at least two of which are living out of state. So we're not sure how that'll roll out, next to it is storage, they have moved forward with plans to rebuild next door to it. And then in between, that's the Simple Machine Winery on county land. And then finally, the other kind of commercial area that we're not seeing growth happening in is in this lot down here, it's down, I think it is the car. And if it's car maintenance or car, it has some sort of automobile work to it, and I apologize, I had this all written down this morning, but it's now afternoon, and so details are escaping my mind. But there is some environmental concerns about a potential area that will likely need to be addressed if it were to ever sell or move to a different owner. So from, from Kristen's perspective, those five areas are especially key in needing some support in the rebuild. You know, but as we all know, you know, recovery is not just about buildings going back up, it's about the people that were in them. And we really know that the communities in Talent that were most impacted are our young families. You know, our school district started with 350 fewer students this school year, and they're still busing 200 students in from outside the district. We know our Spanish-speaking community was also overrepresented in those that were impacted by the fire. We also know older adults, through those unpaid incomes are also over-impacted by the fire, we hear that through access. And it's been specifically hard to find additional housing for, for those 65 and older. And then one thing I think the top fire really managed to realize too is our small businesses, they need a lot of support, particularly post-COVID and post-fire. And we don't have a great sense of how many there were prior to the fire, you know, we're trying to make a better contact with them now. That is a very high-risk sector. That really is essential to a small town to stay, to stay vibrant and resilient. And beyond the people impacted, you know, this was really an awareness that the city had around our need for better emergency preparedness, our better hazard mitigation, and of course, long-term planning and long-term infrastructure investments. So with, you know, keeping particularly these core areas in mind, you know, how do we measure progress? How do we know if we actually are helping our young families, our small businesses, our older adults? You know, how do we know what people actually need? Are we making sure we're staying connected to hear directly from them? That's something that city staff have been working on, up in our game on. And the next step is really is how do we provide seats at the table of this rebuild process? To make sure we're rebuilding for community, I mean, in there once. And then, you know, ultimately, what this presentation is about and for is how can urban renewal help with all of this? How can we really leverage urban renewal as a tool to help reach the vision and outcome that our community is pushing for? And I know you all as a council and board would like to have. Okay. This is a brain break, so I'm going to completely change to a different side of our brains. Any questions that you all have just about rebuild, what staff are seeing on the ground? What's going on, anything like that that we can just talk about? Yes, Mayor?
We have an update on the Anderson Vista project.
Yeah, I have, and all I'm going to do is to reach out to Jason Elzy again. Last I heard, they were working with somebody new at USDA, but I have not heard an update since then.
And wait, can you tell me when that was?
It was about two months ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I'll do a quick stop share here, any other questions or things that folks are seeing on the rebuild that they want to share with the group?
Just to answer Mayor's question in regards to looking at the numbers for Mountain View, we have 20 permits that have been issued. permits that have been issued. Of course, Totem Pool has their twenty-seven, and they have site plan review now. And Wagner Creek has two permits, but most, as Jordan stated, most of those are RVs right now, but they will be getting manufactured homes and placed in there.
Thank you, Kristen.
Councilor Penomra.
Yeah, I have a question on Totem. So the twenty-seven are the FEMA trailers. Are those going away or? I know that they might be sold. I'm just wondering what's, originally, I thought they were gonna keep them there permanently. Just wondering what's up with that.
My understanding is there's a number of them that are gonna stay. The ones that are facing east-west will be leaving, and he's adding RV sites to his mobile home park. So he's gonna have a combination of mobile home and RVs.
Will that increase density there?
Yes, it will. But typically, RVs are supposed to be temporary. They're not supposed to, people, they're not intended to be lived in permanently on those sites.
For health reasons, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, fire, health, yeah.
I, I have a question about that. So we passed a resolution, I think it was, or an ordinance just after the fire, preserving mobile home parks for mobile homes. I, what, how can they change that to RV space?
In, for mobile home parks, you can have RV spaces. But on, in RV, RV parks, you cannot have mobile homes by law.
Is that, is, so is that a superseding law from our own community code? Or is that our community?
That is a state law, but I don't know that it would supersede ours. We can be more restrictive, but we can't be less restrictive.
I think if we review the record on that, which I think it happened in either October. Yes, Octo, either September or October, help, help me if remember it differently, was the, or the ordinance for mobile home space.
Are you referring to the executive order? No.
No.
Title seventeen, was it?
We, no. It was, it might have been, maybe what we did was pull it out of Title seventeen and pass it immediately. I think that's what we did.
Yeah, and I, and I can't promise you it was seventeen and not eighteen, but it was something that we had already been working on and that we were afraid that mobile home parks would be sold and converted into, you know, apartments or something like that. We wanted.
Other uses. We, we were concerned about other uses other than preserving it for mobile home spaces. So I would look to that to see if that would include recreational use or temporary use.
Sounds like the RVs are just substituting the mobile homes on a permanent basis. Is that right?
I hope not, but yes, that, that's possible. Because those, that is our new low income, unfortunately. Very low income, probably.
Oh, with modular homes coming in, on, likely coming in, I just hope that we, just, I mean, if there's any and if there's any, any detail that, that might have some bearing on this, I, excuse me, I hope, I hope we will take a look at that.
Oh, yeah, I'll look into that. I'll search for the, in the code and make sure that it's all that he's meeting the criteria of our code.
And, thank you. I don't mean to question your expertise, Kristen. I just, I thought I remembered it differently, and I, I know the discussion would certainly bear that out.
Okay.
And it is ordinance number twenty-two, nine, six, four, oh. So we'll look that up afterwards and and look into it next week.
Great. Do we have any information about, any more information about the parcel that was being explored by Catholic charities? About why, you know, what hap, what came up there and if there's any other prospective developers interested in that?
Not to my knowledge, nobody's reached out to us to ask any questions or pursue any kind of development on those properties.
I think Catholic Charities ended up pulling out. From my understanding, is that they weren't able to put enough units there to make it cost-effective. There is a difficult piece about that property, is that the road that runs alongside of it towards Bear Creek would need to be widened.
Okay.
Which I know reduces how many units you could put on that property.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you all ready for a brain shift into numbers? Use it. It's gonna work out a little. Jumping into general fund numbers. So this is just some, some basic background, mostly to help me frame my mind of what kind of resources the city have and what kind of uses can we use them for. So you all, you know, through budgeting projects, you know that we have our general fund, our parks fund, street fund, the water fund, our SEC fund. We have a capital fund as well, but capital fund is really just a savings account for us where we transfer money from other funds into it and then use it for capital projects. So it wouldn't make a slide too small, I left it off. And then over here on the right side is what we can use that specific money for. So money that we collect and put into the parks fund, we can only use for maintenance and capital projects as they relate to the parks. Same with street funds, same with water funds, but water funds includes our utility operations, et cetera. So really, our parks fund, street fund, water fund, SEC fund, they're all there for infrastructure. They're to help support the, the capital projects and they're there to help support the maintenance on it. The general fund is primarily used for services. You know, this is where the majority of our personnel money is. This is where pretty much anything not maintenance or capital project related falls into. Our community engagement efforts, our planning department is entirely within the general fund, our police services are entirely within the general fund. So I really view the general fund as our services or programs budget. But what's really particular about the general fund, that is, what makes it the backbone for city governments? Is it the most flexible money? So if we ever fell short or we wanted to use money for a maintenance or a capital project, we could use general fund dollars for that. And the reverse can't be said for, for parks fund money, we can't put that into our general fund. So general fund money is our most flexible and it's our programs and services resources come from there. You know, diving specifically into this general fund of, of all of these different resources that go into it, we've seen a huge change in resources due to the fire. So what I'm showing you here, you know, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we're having pretty, normally the property taxes make up fifty percent or about half of the general fund revenue. We have in here franchise fees are in the light green. Gray is a whole bunch of just smaller sources that all lump together. We get our state shared revenue, which is based off population. License permits and fees, so that's for people who are going through the build permitting process and then grants. So pretty consistently, you know, property tax is the backbone of the general fund. When the fire hit, that really changed. What we saw is we experienced our property tax drop in twenty-twenty-two, just the way property taxes work, year after the fire. But we're seeing huge jumps in our community development revenue, our license permits and fees, and in our grant revenue. You know, what we expect in the future is that once kind of the bulk of the rebuild is done, our license permits and fees are gonna fall back down to a more normal level of what we, as talent, have specifically experienced. Grants, you know, that HUD funding's coming down the pipeline, we expect grants to stay high over probably the next three years. But we do expect a very large drop-off on grant funding after that last round of HUD funding comes down. Franchise fees, very consistent. You know, we don't expect those to ever change significantly. Public safety surcharge, that's based off a number of households, state shared revenue. You know, all of that will stay consistent. So over the next few years, this purple bar will drop, the green bar will drop, and our property taxes will go back to being the main source of income for our general fund. Why is that important with that focusing on it? Because that is how urban renewal really most impacts the city. Is it impacts to our general fund, specifically that property tax source of revenue. So when we're talking about urban renewal, you know, as a city, we're really interested in understanding how much property tax loss could we expect with urban renewal versus not? And how will that potentially impact our operations? As Nick can also attest to, projecting assessed values, projecting property taxes is an art. I think I'm still on the elementary school level of this art. But he and I, we made some assumptions to help project into the next one to three years, how much we can expect this rebuild to really impact our assessed value within our community. Because that is, you know, we saw how much rebuild was occurring earlier, that will have a very large impact on our tax rule. So the way, the way the permitting process works, and so a property owner submits their permit to get approved by the city, and there is a value on that permit of how much I think they will cost them to make the improvements they want to make. So we went ahead and made, made the assumption that that construction cost can be used as the same thing as the real market value increase. Where if you own a piece of property for a hundred thousand, you're gonna build a house and it's gonna cost another hundred thousand, that property will be able to be sold for two hundred thousand dollars and all of a sudden then. So we're making an assumption that that's the real market value. So assessed value is always a smaller size, or I should say, hopefully is always a smaller size than the real market value. And talking to the assessor, and this was a process the assessor recommended for just our projections, is we multiplied those construction costs, that real market value, by seventy percent. That's typically the, the ratio from real market value to assessed value. It's much more nuanced than that. But given the general trends and the scope and scale of this, though we found that through these estimates and these assumptions, we actually are close to what the assessor expects to see on the tax rules for this coming year. So our other assumption is that it takes ten months to build a house, and the rate of rebuild is constant. So you build ten percent in the first month, an additional total of twenty percent in the second month, et cetera. And the reason that's important, because the way Jackson County works, the assessor stops by someone's property on January, right before January of every year, and they say, hey, look, there's half a house. We're gonna put fifty percent of the assessed value onto this property. This is something that we discussed, I think, with Nick and Elaine's presentation to the Tura Board of why their numbers had shifted a little bit, because other counties do it where they don't put it on the tax rule until the certificate of occupancy has been issued. And then I, we also did a, a projection, you know, our initial estimates were based off only the permits that we had received between September twenty-twenty and March twenty-twenty-two. But we know right now that it's only about thirty-eight to fifty percent of the rebuild, so we know more permits are coming through the next year. So we made the assumption that whatever construction costs were added on to the tax rule in twenty-one, in April, December, and twenty-twenty-one will be the same in April, December, twenty-twenty-two. You know, just doing some checks, that's a pretty accurate assumption, just based on how much we can expect of rebuild to occur, matches up. And then, you know, always making the, the assumption of property values that they will increase three percent each year. We're already existing property values, not exiting, pardon me. Any questions on the, like, the assumption side? And this is mostly to share with finance directors and folks like that. Okay, here's the end results of all of those assumptions and all of those numbers. What you're seeing here is the city assessed value, so how much property value is there that we charge tax on? And I want you to notice that eighteen, nineteen, and twenty has a blue bar. That represents the assessed value in the urban renewal area. That's the Urban Renewal Agency that currently exists. They stopped collecting in fiscal year twenty-one, and so the entire tax rule went back onto the city's property tax potential. So this is the ending of the old urban renewal, and this is the beginning of the proposed urban renewal. And I took away my notes, so I can't tell you the exact numbers right now. But you can see that there is some substantial growth of assessed value in the rebuild area over the next two years, which is expected to continue for the next at least two years as that building completes itself. How does that impact annual tax collected? You can see here, what's in blue is what has gone to urban renewal. What's in gray is what's gone to the city. These are based off the projected numbers. You know, it's never this accurate, because some property taxes don't get paid. Some property taxes are exempt from having to be paid. This is approximate, but that scale and difference would be. And this is just a different way to look at the impacts that, for me, is a little easier to grasp. And that is every single year, how much property tax do we collect per capita? What you see here in green is the actual property tax collected per capita. And gray is what it would have been if the urban renewal wasn't collecting taxes. And if a future urban renewal wasn't collecting taxes, or if the urban renewal as planned goes forward. You know, things that stick out to me here is that with urban renewal, we will say pretty consistent with what we're collecting now. Without urban renewal, you know, we see a very fast, quick jump because of all the rebuild that's occurring. You know, two years or more down the line, that'll level off and start being a more typical property tax growth. You know, we are currently providing services at this cost level. One thing that I am concerned about with my city perspectives we had on, is that it does do increase over time. And our property tax likely would, revenue wouldn't be increasing at the same rate as those expenses. Particularly, oops, pardon me. Labor, you know, we're looking at likely five percent per year over the next years in terms of costs, healthcare costs go up, et cetera. So we would see a tightening of the belts if the urban renewal plan goes forward. But we would stay at the rate that we're currently getting. Questions on this projection?
Question, so the tightening of the belt is kind of based on the assumption that there is no wiggle room in the general fund, that over, you know, over the years that you know, and contrary to that, if there hadn't been a fire over the years, we've been using some of our money in the general fund has gone to capital projects, if, if I remember correctly. And, you know, sometimes we don't use all of, all of what we've budgeted. So this is this is just based on money coming in. We don't have a comparison to actual money being spent out of the general fund at this point.
No, I can, I can get you that.
Oh, it's, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
So what, so what is showing, so you're right. So, so City of Town, we've received, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars in property tax stabilization that has no end date. We've also received a ton of grant money that does have an end date. You know, the end date is June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, I believe, that we need to use that money by. But what it allows us, allows us to shore up our general fund. So I, we, you know, as a city, we will likely be okay, you know, for the three, five, potentially eight-year timeline. But urban renewal is a tool that is a thirty-year lifeline. And so when I say tightening our belts, I do, you know, once that reserve is used, that we will be required to start using our general fund reserve to help us meet growing demand. That is a point where I am more concerned about lower property taxes coming in.
So just to clarify, yeah, I agree with everything that you're saying for years' future, but what my, I think the, the focus of my question, and I'm not sure if this is really apt or not, was, you know, in the years of the past, it, when there wasn't a fire or anything like that, it wasn't like every penny of our general fund went to the services. Some of our general fund actually went to capital projects, if, if I'm remembering correctly. So it wasn't, you know, kind of like, it wasn't the situation situation where, oh gosh, if we lost one penny of our general fund, we wouldn't have been able to meet services. There was, you know, and, and I'm talking before the fire. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm trying. So that's, that's where I'm, I'm trying to. Understand, but that's, doesn't take away anything from what, what you were saying in the context of, of the fire.
And I'm, I'm more than happy to provide the information of how much we actually spend on services every single year. And that's a great, great information ask, so I will gather that and give you all a visual for it. And recognizing that, yes, as a municipal, we really try to store away general fund money. And we, it's flexible. We do use it on capital projects. You know, if we were to stop using general fund money on capital projects, how that would impact then to do capital projects. We would have to likely increase SDCs, increase park fees. Or if urban renewal was offsetting those capital projects enough, it could provide relief. For our capital project budget. So it's, it's the balance for sure, but I will get you all, that's a great question of annual costs of how much we spend on services specifically. Any questions?
Can I just ask a quick question about this graph?
Yeah.
It's kind of stupid, but I'm, I'm tracking the graph from a hundred and sixty seven to one seventy to one eighty five. Then to this jump to two twenty three, which is post-fire, right? From the, it's, is that pre-fire?
The reason why the jump happened is because that's when the current urban renewal stopped collecting.
Okay, and then. And then there's a gray line from two twenty three to two twenty four. Is that, why? I mean, what does that mean exactly?
That means in fiscal twenty one, there was no urban renewal that was taking any property tax from the city.
Okay, alright.
No urban renewal, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood what that meant. Thank you.
Of course.
And just to dovetail, uh, piggyback on that question. Uh, and the thing that I always have to remind myself and make sure I, I understand it correctly. Even though the fire happened in twenty twenty, we don't see the hit until. You're going to put your cursor where we see the hit, right? It's the, it's the twenty twenty two one, right? Yeah, because I remember that year, we said, oh, great, we have all this money coming in from urban renewals, so. And we accounted for it. And then, yeah, and it was fiscal year twenty twenty two. That we see the decline because of the way, because of the timing of, of when things are assessed.
Exactly, so. So it's frozen January twenty twenty, or the fire hit September twenty twenty. January twenty twenty one is when they measure all the property values. And then they certify in October and we get it the following fall. So we got it fall of twenty twenty one is when we got the impact from the fire. So that's why we see the, the drop from twenty one to twenty two on this annual tax collected visual.
And, and I just want to say these visuals are great. I, I think having different, different types of visuals is really helping. Me understand the data better, so thanks.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Same as well. Um, so, you know, concerns, expenses increases, and then the other thing that's just from the city perspective. Is the fire also made us realize that there's so many more services that we'd like to be providing to our community. And luckily we are providing those services to them now. Those services, sorry, I'm dropping down here. Here, we now have our GIS, which we never had before the fire. We're really concentrating and have money around emergency preparedness. So that's our evacuation mapping, you know, we want to start a cert program, update our EOP. We have really upped our gamma Spanish communication. That's been really fun to see grow. And then we had on hand large scale grant writing and small scale grant writing. These are really all services that we didn't have or didn't do prior to the fire. Now, we did do grant writing, but not to the level or scale that we've been doing it now. This is the rough estimate of how much we've been spending on these services. These are entirely grant funded right now. So if we wanted to continue these services, you know, it would be a figuring out how to adjust budget dollars to cover those costs. I want to make really clear, I'm not saying that if urban renewal moves forward, we'll cut these services. You know, budgeting is always a decision of, of where things go, but be aware, I would love to continue to provide these services to our community at large. I want to show you utility assistance right here. This is something that's been, I think, really beneficial to our community. It started only four months ago. And it's through a, a state grant program. So we don't actually receive any of the dollars or do any of the granting. But it's only a one-year program. And so something that I'd be interested in starting, down the line is figuring out a way that we could provide utility bill relief. To our community, particularly those on fixed incomes or lower income households. Since, you know, that's another reason that people get priced out of communities. It's not just the housing prices, but everything that goes with the house. Counselor Greider?
Jordan, do you have any more information you can share about that? Pro, not about the program specifically, but who is running that or how folks get involved in it?
Yes, I will send you the PDF. It's access.
Okay, cool, yeah.
So I'll, I'll send a PDF of the program. What I also have, your remark that I just wasn't able to gather in time. Is I'm able to see how much of our utility bills debt is being paid off through that program. So that's something that we can pull next week. Great. Yeah, Counselor Penomar?
Yeah, so I know that the, that you're saying those are currently grant funded now. Is there the potential for some of these two or all of them potentially to be grant funded in future?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's always a possibility of applying for grants. I don't, I mean, I got out of the nonprofit world for a reason, and that's because trying to sustain services on grants is a tricky thing. And it can be a very fickle thing as well. You know, I feel like if, if we, if you all as a council. Council hats on, or hats listening. You know, aside that it's an essential service that the community needs to provide for, I would really recommend that we find a permanent revenue source for those services. Rather than a grant, just protect it, you know, for the years to come. You know, we have a lot of money for this right now, so we're really focusing on using that money in these categories. You know, if we lose funding for these or the grant funding runs out, we don't have another revenue source. What we probably do is just streamline and, and narrow them down to be less in scope. Yeah, Counselor?
Yeah, so, and I'm also trying to remember in the very beginning, we were looking at the general fund as a whole, and you don't have to go back there, but I'm just trying to remember. Whether or not we have a safety fee, a public safety fee or not, I don't know. And I think that we're also, sorry, we have a, that Portland State University study going to see. What really is needed for a small town police department. We were going to look at some, get some financial information out of that. I'm just wondering where all of that is.
Yeah, so that research is still ongoing. Been talking to our partner agencies right now to figure out if there's some. Overlap and large scale efficiencies that we could get by working together. We do have a public safety surcharge on our water bills. It is a buck fifty a month, and that brings in about a hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand a year. You know, with that. The. I have, I'll get you the, it'll be nice to compare that with the cost of services that I'll provide to you all later. But I would hesitate, you know, increasing the public utility bill. Sorry, the public safety charge is something that we could choose to do as a council. I would not need to go to a vote. That's a, since the utility bill charge, it's a council decision. But it would increase the cost to folks across the talent jurisdiction.
But just to clarify, it's on the utility bill, but it is, it goes straight to the general fund?
So we have on the utility bill, a parks utility fee, a streets utility fee, a public safety surcharge, public safety fee. And I think we also have a water utility fee. But that one, let me double check.
I just want to add context too. It wasn't very long ago that we had a library fee as well. And I think it was three dollars, we reduced, we eliminated it when the county. When the new library district was formed, excuse me. And I think we reduced it, we eliminated except for one dollar that we moved. We took one dollar from, from that and moved it over to the police fee. So currently it's still less than what it was for. For a good long time.
And the thing that I just want to put out there, because I know this would come up a lot in my conversations with John. Programs like this, you know, that are, that are provided for citywide activity and that are really programmed rather than infrastructure. You know, urban renewal cannot offset those things. Elaine, I'm going to get a head nod for you if that was the correct statement. But things like, yeah, it has to be directly related to urban renewal activity within the specific geography. And not something that's provided everywhere and we're just offsetting costs for. But there are areas where urban renewal can really support the city and really support the community of talent. You know, as Eleanor, or sorry, as Counselor Penomar is alluding to, infrastructure investments. You know, if, if urban renewal can help pay for large capital projects, it really helps us keep rates and fees low. Since that is a main source of how we fund capital projects. You know, large scale hazard mitigation, this is something that we've been applying to a lot of grants for, and we've been hearing nothing back. But we do have areas, for example, Wagner Creek, that is chocolate blackberries that also present. Risks to our community. And so urban renewal is a great way that there is enough money there to do that work. Right now, it would be difficult to fund a full-scale cleanup. You know, urban renewal also does a, a strong, well, it doing commercial reinvestment. So helping bring back commercial building spaces, helping really make the commercial corridors areas attractive to draw customers to. You know, that's really essential for our own economic resiliency and given the, the weak return of our commercial sector is a point of worry. For me in terms of our build back and our resilience as a community. And then another thing that, where I've heard urban renewal has been beneficial is, you know. Home ownership or helping folks offset costs to build homes, get them in there. You know, Elaine, I'm realizing now I didn't check with you if home ownership program is within urban renewal purview. Yeah, okay, good, that's what I thought. Home ownership, you know, something that really helps with community resiliency is to have folks owning their home. To help build a generational wealth, to just help make a more economically resilient community. Before the fire, talent was a little, about fifty fifty between renters and owners. I would love to shift that needle more into the homeownership status. Just to start helping encourage that kind of economic growth locally. You know, the reason I have it in gray is my, my concern on homeownership in the Burnt River area is we're seeing that the homes returning. Are going to likely be much higher priced than the homes elsewhere in talent, because they're new material, people are building them bigger. So I would love to start homeownership citywide, so that folks can buy a home and really anywhere across talent, that that's just their budget. But in the absence of that, you know, it'd be really great to see anyone move towards ownership. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to clarify too. Elaine, urban renewals can participate in, in building. Affordable rental products as well. Correct, yeah, and, and with the passing of SB eight and the Burns Card being where, where it is. It's a potential opportunity for us to recover for those folks who don't, I want to. Own or, or won't necessarily be in a position, but, but that is another potential use.
Yes. Giving a resounding thumbs up from Elaine.
Counselor Penomaroff, you have another question?
I was, yeah, I was just going to remind folks that Senate Bill Eight out of Oregon is a way to. Get some of the obstacles out of the way to help nonprofits create affordable housing in commercial areas. And we've been talking about it a lot.
And Counselor, I know when I last talked to the Housing Authority about it, they said a barrier was that it had to be a city-owned property. Do we clarify if that was the case or not?
I don't think that's true. I, I do remember talking to some folks from a thousand friends. They said there was a little bit of. It was written awkwardly. But I think that the ownership of the land could be nonprofit, faith-based or public. It was the intention and, and I think they may have even cleaned up the language in the last legislative session, if I remember correctly. But we could check back with the legislative folks at a thousand friends and. Get that clarified. I think they were working on a one pager as well.
Great, yeah, that would help. Know what their renewal could, yeah, best be leveraged for. You know, things that come to me as, as a, as an implementer is, you know, what specific projects can help achieve these goals? As well as the goals that the board and the council has. You know, what level of resources do we need for those projects? Knowing that there is an offset, that it is, if we're putting money into urban renewal, it does take away money from city service, citywide services. You know, and then the other question, thinking about this urban renewal plan is how soon do we need those resources? Something that, you know, Nick has really well explained to me in all of this is. Talent is in a very unique space for urban renewal. Typically, urban renewals take places that are so slow growing. That it takes a long time to get a pot of money to actually do things with. But since talent is having rebuild happen so quickly, we are going to have a lot of money right off the bat if the project, if the plan moves forward. And so really knowing specifically what we want to use those funds for and how best to leverage them. And I want to show you a scale of that here. So what this mockup is, is, is Nick made this one for. What the numbers would look like if we froze January twenty twenty one. What the numbers would look like if we froze January twenty twenty two. And what they would look like if we froze January twenty twenty three. You know, and in all, I would say in the first two scenarios, you know, we can expect a lot of money upfront. And then really consistent money come out through, through the history of it. Whether we do it in January twenty one or twenty two, you know, start collecting the same year. This was, I ran out of time finishing this PowerPoint, so it was the last, least beautiful slide I could put up here for you all. But just to show, thinking through those questions of, of how much do we need and when do we need it by, can help state. Through the options of when do we, would we want to start an urban renewal? And if we do, well, I should have Nick in around me, Nick, go ahead before I say anything more.
No, no, I, I just wanted to add a, a little point of clarification that the January twenty one and January twenty two. Dates that you're talking about in those first two columns, those correspond with fiscal year ending twenty twenty two. And fiscal year ending twenty twenty three tax roll data. And the real key distinction is this October. So if the urban renewal plan has an effective date before this October. It would be using the fiscal year ending twenty twenty two tax roll for this frozen base, and that gets you the first column. And then if you adopt a plan with an effective date after this October, the new tax roll data will come out. So you have that higher frozen base and that gets you into the second column. And then if you were to delay all the way until next October of twenty twenty three, that would put you in that third and final column. So just, just making that point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. You know, and information that, oh, go ahead, Counselor, before I jump in.
No, go ahead and finish up. It's, it's actually a, a later question.
Yeah, so something that I wasn't able to put in the slides in time, but I will provide it along with the other requested information next week. You know, both scenarios of freezing this first year and freezing the second year. Are very large urban renewals for a town our size. Nick and Elaine pulled the data for, I think it was ten other cities that all started a urban renewal in the last five years. And that they're all under, I think, a ten thousand population, or under fifteen thousand population. And, and talent's proposal falls up there. It is, I think, second highest rank, I'm going to have to. We've been through so many numbers, I'm going to give you the actual numbers, but, but in both scenarios, talent is one of the higher and larger urban renewal. in both scenarios, talent is one of the higher and larger urban renewals for a town our size. And recognizing that, that we're also in a very different situation than other towns as well. So I wanna present this all to the, see some other potential scenarios. You know, there's also a lot of creativity around not even just looking at the start date of the urban renewal district, but things around underleveing. Um, things where it would be about putting tax dollars back on the tax rolls. So that, um, city services could stay maintained or stay abreast with expenses. Um, for example, if we need a huge input upfront to help get our commercial and some of our affordable housing going, awesome, let's protect it while the city has stability for the next three to five years in the general fund. But then once we start facing that fiscal cliff, um, reducing the size of the urban renewal area, we're passing through some of the funds. Yeah, counselor.
Um, yeah, so, um, just to, to kind of amplify what you just said. Um, at any point, and I guess Elaine will give a thumbs up if I, if I heard this correctly during all the presentations over the last several months. Um, that at any point, any year, we can say, we're gonna give some of this money back. We can do that any year at any point, and we could also, um, reduce the area at any point, you know, no matter what we decide this year. Um, did I get that right, Elaine?
Yes, you did. The, the, a- and I've had cities do this both ways. The issue with doing it on an annual basis where you make a decision annually is there is no stability to the city or the other taxing districts in knowing how much money they'll be getting uh, for, from the urban renewal deciding to under levy. So as you're thinking about that, if part of it is giving stability to both the city's general fund and to other taxing districts at some point in the future, um, then you want to make that under levy be, um, a, a permanent under levy so that they know how much money they're going to get. Otherwise, it's just surprise money that they get, uh, when you decide to under levy.
Can I, can I follow up on that? Um, so it's surprise money if the city doesn't know how much it's gonna be, but until the decision is made. Right? But if the decision, because we're all the same people, if the decision is predicated on how much money the city needs, then, you know, it's not a surprise necessarily. Am I, am I understanding that correct, that it's only a surprise because, because the decision gets made at some point and the city doesn't have foreknowledge? But if you know the decision is gonna be ma- made based on what the city might need, then you, then you do have that kind of assurance.
Right, and, and that works if you're only considering the city and the agency. But if you're thinking about your other taxing district partners, um, that, that doesn't work so well for them.
Oh, that's clear. Thank you.
I, I have a, a question. I haven't, I, I, can you identify, Jordan, what the fiscal cliff is? You, you said as we head for the fiscal cliff, I haven't seen a fiscal cliff in any of your graphs. So what year does the fiscal cliff happen and what does it look like? Do you have a graph of it?
I don't have a graph of it. You know, I can do a graph, what the fiscal cliff would look like if we assume that we'll receive no more grant funding for wildfire and COVID purposes. Um, the big question mark in trying to estimate when that could be is based off that HUD funding.
Can we go back to the graph that you made with the blue and gray lines?
Yes.
Uh, not this one. No, the, the one with, the one I asked you a question about, what does this gray line mean? That one, right. So, um, so what I see here, uh, for clarification, what I see here is, um, you know, us leveling off at two hundred and twenty-three dollars, um, at the point that, um, Tora stopped collecting and then, uh, moving forward to two twenty-six. Now, technically, a fiscal cliff indicates that there's a big drop ahead of us. So I think, um, I just wanna clarify, are you describing the fiscal cliff as, uh, as, uh, the, their, their, the point, a point at which we're still leveled off at this, uh, with urban renewal number and the growth of the without, without urban renewal, is that what you, is that what you're describing as a fiscal cliff? I just wanna understand that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So what this graph is showing is just the property tax collected divided by per capita. So, so really what we're gonna see if, if urban renewal gets introduced, starting, um, fiscal year end twenty twenty-two, what we'll see is we'll see a, a strong leveling out of our property tax per capita. And so this will stay fairly flat for the next, you know, chunk of years, growing at whatever our outside of urban renewal area grows at. Um, in addition to the three percent per year increase.
So what I'm gonna show you. Can I ask you really, uh, uh, to add to this question, to add to this question? Um, what, so the city growth, you said, uh, you said that I was looking to hear, part of what I was looking to hear, you said, this takes into account the growth of the city as well as the three percent. So what, um, what calculation did you use for continued growth?
Yes, so what I've done for these recent years, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, is I've used permit rebuild data for areas that are outside of the urban renewal area. So about twenty percent of all the rebuild that's occurring is happening outside of the urban renewal area. So these numbers take into account the fact that that assessed value, that property tax value will hit city, city payroll, city property taxes rather than the urban renewal taxes. I'm also accounting for all of the property value that exists in the city that is not in the urban renewal area, that that will increase three percent each year. That might be an underestimate. I know the county's average is three point six percent. Um, but I thought that was close enough and a guarantee enough with that three percent to use for these projections.
So, uh, were there any, um, was there, is there any data about the, what buildable land is available?
We're doing a buildable land inventory right now. We just got together with Nikki on that one through our GIS work. Um. And we can go ahead and share that, because that, that will have an influence. Though before I move on to Counselor Phenomar's question, I wanna clarify what I mean by fiscal cliff.
Thank you.
Yeah, so really what I expect to see, you see how our property tax, you know, is pretty stable here. The, the height of the orange bar, that's our property tax with urban renewal existing. You know, then, then it starts increasing, you know, the property tax growth. So this is kind of a, a more normal rate of property tax growth that we can expect once all the fire rebuild is all done.
Oh, god damn it.
All right, Kristen.
Hey, hey, Kristen, mute.
You need it.
Kristen, that's not the worst we've heard, so don't worry about it.
I'm not going to sit next to her. Whoops, sorry, my dust just fell. And then what we're gonna see is, you know, these property taxes, we would expect these to go up very sharply because of the rebuild happening if urban renewal didn't occur. And then leveling off back to kind of this typical growth rate, you know, likely five years down the line. You know, if urban renewal occurs, it'll keep our bar pretty close to this height for the next chunk of time, you know, growing just as much as the, as the development that occurs in talent. Where we're gonna fall, because right now what we're doing is we're seeing huge revenues compared to what we're used to. This license permits and fees, this is only gonna last for another year or two, the amount of license permit and fees that we collect. This grant money, this is only good until fiscal year twenty-four. So we're gonna see this green bar disappear and we're gonna see this purple bar drop down. And those areas don't grow very much year to year. Our franchise fees don't really grow, you know, our fine charges for service rental income, that doesn't really grow every year. State shared revenue stays consistent with our population. Looks like I overestimated it for this year. So we'll see a collapse and a return, um, really to what we were before the fire with a level of property tax slightly a bit lower than what we were before the fire. So as the city grows or as you, I shouldn't say the city grows, but as service demand increases or the cost of providing services increase, that is when I expect to see our expenses and our revenues get closer and closer together.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Great, counselor?
Yeah, so could, I just wanted to follow up on a question the mayor was asking you about that gray line graph.
Hmm.
Not, yeah, that one. So if you're doing a per capita or per person, what are you using for growth in the population?
Yep, so here, you know, we're using our PSU certified demographic numbers. We use those for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This is when we fell to five thousand seven hundred thirty-seven is our population estimate. And then I'm making the estimate that we're gonna return to our full growth, not to our pre-fire number of folks, um, within three and a half years from now. You know, because that kind of follows the rate of rebuilding that we're seeing occur. So by twenty twenty-four, I have us back at our typical, um, just under our typical fire level. I think I have fiscal year twenty-five is when we get back to our pre-fire population level. And then from there, PSU has us at a point nine percent growth rate per year for the next twenty years.
Okay, and, and I guess, um, most of the folks though are coming back since we only have, only twenty percent of the rebuilds are outside the urban renewal that most of the population growth is within the urban renewal area.
Yes, but let me clarify, so the city provides services to everyone, whether they're in the urban renewal area or not. And so this is including the urban renewal area population as well as those outside of the urban renewal area. So it's this, this graph is showing literally just the amount of tax that we collected divided by the number of people that were in talent that year. Um, where it's hypothetical is where there's no green circles. This is the hypothetical of if we didn't have the urban renewal in fiscal year twenty, oops, fiscal year twenty eighteen, you know, this is the hypothetical of if we don't have an urban renewal and hypothetical if we do.
Okay, and here I have a different question, so that satisfies me on that, so thank you. Um, my different question is, and this I guess is, is a Nick or Elaine question is, um, just for the perspective, for every dollar that we're giving up, uh, out of the general fund property tax, um, how many dollars is urban renewal, um, getting?
I think it's a one dollar and three dollars from other taxing jurisdictions.
Yeah, it's in between three and four dollars, um, correct.
So, so, uh, one dollar loss to the general fund is a three to four dollar gain to the urban renewal, whatever urban renewal is gonna do with that money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I just, I wanna emphasize that that dollar loss is a really a loss to our services. Where that the three dollar gain is a gain for our infrastructure. The urban renewal is typically best used as an infrastructure tool, or I should say, most successful at being an infrastructure tool. Yeah, counselor, go ahead.
I feel like I'm talking too much. I wanna give other people a chance to, um, to weigh in. Um, I'm just saying that, that one dollar versus, uh, three or four dollars is, is, um, very important to me. Uh, in terms of how to weigh this as well as, um, the ability to reduce, uh, in three years, four years, ten years, um, at any point. So I'm, I think that, um, with some of this conversation, it kind of sounds like, uh, we've maxed out using our general fund in terms of services. And I try to imagine if there hadn't been any fire and if we just continue on, um, whether that would be the case. Cause I, I do know there is, uh, that we do, you know, we're always putting aside money to do things that are, um, infrastructure projects or, or the kinds of things that, um, urban renewal might be able to do. So I guess, um, understanding, um, I, I would hate to imply that we're gonna lose services um, just because of the, uh, money leveling out. Um, because we don't know necessarily whether, um, we're spending all that money on services. So, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of what I'm grappling with when we talk about, uh, at what can, at what point will our services actually, um, be constrained? And, um, what will that feel like? And I guess what I would want to, uh, ensure is that we will be able to see, um, in advance, uh, some, a situation like that coming, a situation like that on the horizon or not. So I guess that's kind of a question for you, Jordan.
You know, I wanna you know, I, I do wanna represent in some ways some of our regional partners that are taxing jurisdictions and recognizing that, you know, the city's concern around services, you know, they similarly are losing a portion of money for their services. So I do wanna make a pitch that that three dollars doesn't come without its cost for our taxing jurisdictions. Um, when it comes to being able to have the foresight to look ahead, to know when we will have better shortfalls, um, perfect government, absolutely yes, I feel like fully confident in both myself and Tessa to have that foresight. But I also wanna recognize that, that urban renewal is not a short-term tool. It's a twenty to thirty-year tool, and then the folks here in this room may not be the folks that are in the room when the city hits that point. You know, and it's, you know, I, I worry about relying on good intentions versus writing things into policy. Um, to help make the outcomes happen that, that you all want to happen. You know, one of my worries, and this isn't on the slide, but I, I think I've shared this with you all individually, urban renewal historically is, has been used as a neoliberal justification tool. Um, that it has displaced a lot of vulnerable communities across the state of Oregon and across the nation. And I worry that our urban renewal, because of the amount of money it's collecting, could do a similar thing for talent. Um, even if our intention now is not to have that, what are the decisions gonna be ten years from now? And when there's still a lot of money to go in the funds. So that's kind of what I've been working on with Elaine, is how can we define actual projects for the urban renewal that we hope or at least have our best guess will have the outcomes we want around that equity. Um, but that was not indirect answer to, to your question, counselor. We will always do budget projections, we will always give counselor our best guess of what's coming down the line, so that the council can make the best decision for the city.
I'm wondering if I could just respond to one thing that you said before you called on the mayor, is that okay, mayor?
Yeah, yes.
Um, so, I mean, we're talking about concern about the other districts and, and I think that, that it's great that you're representing that here. Um, I too have been thinking about, uh, the impact of this fire on the other districts. Um, I think people understand that because the homes are getting rebuilt, um, they're getting reassessed um, at seventy percent of, you know, the construction value, which is, you know, shooting through the roof, that in many ways, this fire destructive as it has been, has been a boom, uh, for some people. Um, certainly the property tax rolls, um, as people rebuild are gonna be far higher in future years and there would have been if there hadn't been a fire. So I mean, if I take, you know, my house is an example, um, I'm, I'm guessing a little bit here, but let's say I was paying, say, three thousand dollars a year in property taxes, because I built, you know, twelve years ago. Um, now I'm only paying a thousand, because it's just the land. And when I rebuild, I may be paying four or five thousand in, in property taxes. Um, so that's two thousand dollars more than I'm paying after, as a result of the fire. And that's two thousand dollars more that's going into property taxes. So in a way, that's, that's a boon for everybody. Um, but it could be reinvested and focused in such a way to help, uh, people in the burn scar, to help talent, to help the recovery and to help future resilience. So I'm thinking a lot about that, but I have to say even outside of the urban renewal, which is only twenty-five percent of talent. And if we take the fire district as an example, the city of talent represents about twenty or twenty-five percent of the fire district. In the fire districts area, there are going to be areas outside of urban renewal where property taxes are going to shoot up. And they will benefit, just as all the taxing districts will, they will benefit from this disaster. So as we figure out, you know, how the money is going to be spread, we have to understand that there is a lot more money that's going to be created as a result of this in terms of property taxes in the upcoming years. And I think it's a question of, at least in my mind, of how we, how we direct that money and what problems we're trying to solve and what outcomes we want to achieve.
I agree. Very important.
I appreciate that point a lot, and I, I think I'm going to build on it just for a real quick second, just to kind of add context, but I do have a question, and that is, you know, you, you talk about your house, Eleanor, and, and, or member Panamera, and when we, when we look at those statistics about densities and those changes of densities and and the, the exponential difference in, because of the inflation and then and then we also, at, at the same time, we talk about how we'll be returning the, the fiscal cliff is really just a return to where we would have been had we not had the fire, give or take. If I understand that correctly, Jordan, if I didn't understand that correctly, please, please let me know. And so when I think about, I, I lost a property. And, you know, it had an assessed value of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And, and when I rebuild it, if I rebuild the plan that I have, it, it'll have an assessed value somewhere around eight or nine hundred thousand dollars if that seventy percent rule is, is correct. And when I think about the difference between those two numbers and how I would like to see that, that difference invested in the rebuild of our community, I think about how I hear all the time that we will never catch up on affordable housing in the Rogue Valley. And, but that should not, you know, that should never be a reason to not try as hard as we can. And this is a tool that, yes, is historically used for gentrification, but it is a tool that's also allowed to be used for affordable housing, and that just is not a choice that a lot of communities have made. And I couldn't agree more with Jordan that those are the kinds of things that I hope to see us firm up in, in the policies of this use of money. So that's my soapbox, but I have, I do have a question. So you talked about, and I'm not trying to debunk anything, I just want to make sure that when we're looking at that, you know, that future, those future numbers that we are, that we are considering all of, you know, all of the, all of the stuff. And one of the things I've heard that actually what could clear it up is the PSU numbers that you're using for your forecast. Are those the same PSU numbers that are being challenged? Because they, they, because they were so low? Or are they the previous PSU numbers that were actually corrected at one point in time?
They are the, so the original PSU numbers that came out had us at a point two percent growth rate for the next thirty years. We've challenged those numbers and they've increased it, I believe, to a four to five percent growth rate for the next three years, and it might be three to five years for our rebuild process. And then they have us at a point nine percent after that. We will be submitting to them new numbers around our rebuild and our accounts yearly to ask for adjustments on those.
And will, will we, I'm, so are, are your calculations based on those, those new numbers?
They are.
Okay, that's important for all of us to know.
Yep.
All right, that was my question is, the, the, so the P, the, the, when you describe calculating off of the PSU numbers, you're talking about the numbers that you hope to come out of the challenge, right?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
I will jump back. Unless there's any more questions, I will jump to the next slide here, which is our wrap-up slide. And this is just to remind everyone of timeline and excess. So per the Tura Board adoption, we have a meeting scheduled for June twenty-first to vote on if the Urban Board is ready to send the plan and decision out to the other taxing jurisdictions. You know, I have scheduled for that same day, a meeting with all the managers, something I hope to start doing monthly throughout this process. To share them the information around what urban renewal is, what the thoughts about the board are doing and what they expect as next steps in timeline, because they will be receiving that packet through certified mail after the vote on Tuesday. So to prep them. And then the next major mile point would come July nineteenth. I know you all are new under, under me in my currently brief tenure so far as the Tura ED. Thrown information and trying to get more information to you all as you need it. So please don't hesitate to reach out with it. Know that there is, I did have Elaine put together a, you know, drop dead timeline for if we, if the board would like to, or the council would like to freeze it at the fiscal year end twenty twenty-two. We have about a week wiggle room that we could do. If you all feel like you need more information before making your decision. So I'll put that there. We will have our twenty-first, it is posted, it is scheduled. We'll also do a couple of Tura Board housekeeping things as well. I'm including a discussion around Rogue Retreat, which we can definitely start today, and then if we decide to take action on Tuesday. So any more questions, you know, urban renewal related or a city perspective related, or any idea of data that you would like to have kind of within the next seventy-two hours? Yeah, counselor Panamera?
Why don't we let Counselor Perry Miller go first? I've kind of been talking a lot.
I feel so privileged. Thank you. Jordan, I was just wondering if there have been any updates on the projects list. I know that you are very busy. But I was just wondering if we've had any time to drill down on more specifics there?
Yeah, so yes and no, not as much as I would have liked to. Elaine has been compiling a really great spreadsheet of all of the projects that she's been working on and where with other communities and how much they cost, what they were used for. So I hope to share that with all of you next week. I've also started reaching out to folks on the ground. I meant to get a call list together to start handing out to all of you as board members to call as well. But for example, Sunday afternoons, they're hoping to rebuild but facing some barriers. So just trying to better understand from on the ground folks what's needed to help in those specific areas. So long story short, not accomplished as much as I wanted. I'm going to get whatever we can together by Monday, but that would be a bit of a Herculean effort to be able to get hundred percent ready by Tuesday.
So let's hear from Elaine and then Counselor Panamera.
Yes, I just wanted to note that we do not have final documents prepared because we've been working on the data and Nick's been running the spreadsheets. And so I, I think Nick, you now have final data from what you've been going over with Jordan, but I don't have any of that inputted into the report that goes with the plan. So you are, you're, you're not going to get documents. If, if, if I'm lucky, I can get this, a draft of this ready for you on Monday, but that means I'm working over the weekend. And I'm not planning on working on Father's Day. And then on Tuesday, you're supposed to vote on these documents and Tuesday. So, so you you're having looked at the documents and been able to review them. The timeframe is going to be really short if you think you're really going to be trying to adopt something Tuesday night.
So we have one week of wiggle room. Did I understand you right, Jordan?
Correct.
So my feedback has been for a while that we want to, we want to have the steps completed in such a fashion where all of the options are before us when we make the decision. So that means that that unless this board wants to see us change that and we're just going to have to stay on course. Is there any choice in the matter of moving the meeting from Tuesday to Thursday to make it easier for Elaine to provide for that? Does that work for everybody? Would that be problematic? Those are my two questions. Does that work for everybody or, and/or is that problematic?
If you all don't mind, I'd probably still hold that June twenty-first meeting to be able to get some of the other Tura business done. And then if the group decides, schedule an additional special meeting specific to the urban plan, urban renewal plan.
So I, I guess I would ask the board to consider whether or not they want to use up the one week right up, right on the front side of this, or do we want to try to preserve it? And I would imagine we would be preserving the whole week if we were able to make the decision on Thursday. Jordan, do I have that correct?
I'm sorry, will you, I'm going to all throw up the, the final deadline calendar on the share screen.
My goal is to not use up any of the one week wiggle time at this point.
So does that mean, mayor, that, that it would be a June twenty-first vote?
A June twenty-first meeting. But to ensure that Elaine has adequate time to meet on the June twenty-third for the, for the vote. And I see Elaine's got her hand up, so maybe she can inform this discussion.
This timeline is predicated on meeting on the already designated meeting times. So Plan and Commission July twenty-sixth is a Plan and Commission meeting date. The City Council Public Hearing on the seventeenth is a meeting date. I think the twenty-fourth is not a real date. It's a date to get this done in time. You can have special meetings to do any of these as long as you advertise them and that you've advertised your public hearing to everybody as required by statute. So that gives you a little other wiggle room if you want to have meetings on times other than just your regularly planned meetings. I you know, I can, I can get, based on what Nick's done, I think I have the majority of everything ready that I, I can give you something Tuesday morning or, or, or Monday that we can look at and consider, and you can decide whether it is enough or not and decide whether it needs to be brought back for further review and, and input and go from there.
And Elaine, I think the mayor's specific question was, right now on the screen, we're looking at the alternate timeline. We, we've already moved things out a week. If we go back and look at the original timeline. Yes, on this one. Could this timeline still work if the Tura final plan adoption wasn't on June twenty-first, but was on June twenty-third? And if that were the case, I think what you would see is that the consultant confer period would shift out two days. But I think all of the other milestones on here could stay intact. Is that correct? So I think.
So let me, let, let, I, I have the same issue in another city where the consultant confer period is ending after first reading of the ordinance. And so the real question to the city attorney would be if, if one of the taxing districts gives you testimony on the forty-fifth day of consultant confer, and it's after your first reading, and we have to change our ordinance because of that input, can you, can you do that on a non-emergency ordinance? And that is just something we'll have to check with the, with the city attorney to see. Some, I, I have had different interpretations in different cities on whether or not you can change the ordinance in between first reading and second reading.
Elaine, looking at this calendar, it looks like the first reading will occur August seventeenth.
Not on this.
Is that the second reading?
That's second reading.
Oh, okay.
First reading is August third.
Got it.
I mean, I did talk to the assessor for a long time last weekend. He said his certification of the tax rule could be the last week of September. So that, that's why we, but, but he said it probably won't be, but you, we, we, we can't go with probably when it, you know, if you really want to meet this date. So you really do want your plan effective by the twenty-third, which means you need to consider the ordinance by the twenty-fourth. And other things can be moved around there in the middle depending on how you schedule your meetings. But the final vote needs to be by August twenty-fourth.
Sorry, just to clarify, twenty-fourth is second reading.
Correct, correct.
So first reading has to happen prior to that, and there can't be substantial changes between first and second reading.
I don't know about that. It depends on what your city attorney says. So you may know that. I, I don't know that.
Yeah, I think it kind of hinges on what a significant mean.
Yeah.
And, and to the mayor's initial question about the, the twenty, you know, having this decision by the Urban Renewal Agency on the twenty-first versus the twenty-third versus the following week. Every day counts because that day affects the forty-five day consultant confer period. So it's certainly less of a delay on the timeline if this were to take place on the twenty-third than if it were to wait until the following week.
Correct.
Yeah, so if, if we wanted to do the first reading after the consultant confer period. Seems like we could schedule a, a special meeting. I'm still thinking about the original timeline. I think there was, yeah, so there's a little gap there between August third and August sixth. We could schedule a special meeting sometime after August sixth. You know, well before the seventeenth and still basically stay on track. Does that, does that sound right?
Seeing lots of head nods.
I, I just want to say I'm, I don't think that there, if I'm remembering correctly, I don't know that there is a set period of time between first and second reading. Or any requirement that an ordinance needs to be read at a regular meeting for first or second reading, but I couldn't. I'm not absolutely positive about that.
Counselor Greider?
On this timeline, isn't the first reading already prior to the end of the consult period?
Yes, that was one of the problems with the timeline.
Okay.
What I'm hearing, I can throw an idea out there. Let's maintain our June twenty-first meeting. Mostly because I have some other Tura business asked, and we can discuss whatever state the draft is in at that point can be a really great discussion point for the Tura Board to have. I will schedule a second meeting for the twenty-third. So it looks like with the idea of putting a special meeting in in August gives us some flexibility. That generally worked for folks? That generally work for folks? And that way Elaine, you would have until, would the 23rd work for your timeline Elaine, to have a completed plan?
I will do everything I can to get you it completed by the 21st. And if that doesn't happen, the 23rd will work.
Great. Thank you, Elaine.
Counselor Penomra?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the plan itself. So in the consultant confer comes back, we'll have, will we have the chance to modify the plan before first reading? Or, and you know, not, obviously not big modifications. I'm just wondering what, how solid is the plan for what we're going to see on Tuesday and or Thursday? Do we need to do some homework in reading what we've talked about the plan thus far? Are there changes? I, I guess I get, I kind of want to be primed and prepared as far as what to expect regarding the, the plan.
So I'll, I'll answer the process question and then Jordan can talk about the plan because John had the plan, John's had the plan for quite a while. Jordan, I think, just got it a week ago or so. The plan is always draft until it's actually adopted by city council. So it can have changes throughout. However, if there's a major change that we think the taxing districts need to know about that impacts the kind of the bottom line or, or major impact on projects, we need to let them know. In another locality that happened and we let them know, and one of the taxing districts challenged and said, well, that restarts our 45-day time period because you've sent us new information and, and so we're saying that restarts the 45 days. So I, I think it, before we send it out to the taxing districts for the 45 days, it needs to be not changed, especially knowing where the fire district is. It needs to not be changed much until after it's adopted.
To follow that up on that, so after it's adopted, you know, in future years, we can change the plan. And, and I think the only, you know, reason would be to do that is if, you know, there are better ways to meet our objectives in terms of changes in state law or affordable housing mechanisms or whatever, you know, just a better way to get done what we've wanted to do all along. So, so there is, there is, it sounds like over the 20 or 30 years or whatever that is, we will be able to course correct throughout in all ways. So that, that, that makes me feel good because we can't predict. It's really hard to predict.
Would have known COVID was here 10 years ago, right?
As an example, yeah.
Well, one comment about thinking about changing your plan in the future is that some of the plans Elaine and I have written include at the beginning a deadline for a date in the future in which you will revisit the plan and say, after five years or 10 years, we will invite a stakeholder group, including impacted taxing districts to talk about the successes of the plan, to talk about the impact on taxing districts, and decide on whether they want to recommend any changes to the plan at that point in time. And so you're, you're not committing on day one to, you know, some sort of major changes, but you are showing an intention that, yeah, you do want to talk about these things. Once the plan has had a chance to, you know, get on its feet and it's up and running and you can see how well it's working and and how the impacts have been on the, you know, city and other taxing districts. So something you might want to consider.
Yeah, and Nick and I have found in working with agencies across the state that it's about every 10 years that we end up working with every agency. And, and it can be a shorter time period, but we do lots of refreshes on urban renewal plans and a lot of those come at about the 10-year mark.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, well, that was, you know, the end of the information that I had to share with you all today. I know there was the request to add a discussion agenda item on at the end of this meeting. But I will leave it to you, Chair Clark, if you also want to look or advise Chair Clark to the audience for any questions today. We did have a input agenda line.
Thank you for the reminder. Are there any of the attendees that would like to comment on the matter before us this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none presently. Does anyone object to moving on to the discussion item at this time? Seeing no objection. Let us move on to the discussion item.
Great. I'll do a little preamble, but Mayor, I'll open up to you for discussion here. You know, as we all know Rogue Retreat, Executive Director recently had a article come out on him and his affiliation with a church that looks like it is currently practicing or has practiced conversion therapy. You know, this is a mostly Tura word topic. We do have a contract with Rogue Retreat to provide the program services at the Gateway Project. So I wanted to bring the opportunity to you all as a board to discuss if you would like to take any action or have any concerns that you would like to present to Rogue Retreat or any such else. I have been coordinating with Medford, and I am working on a draft letter that we could potentially use for us all to discuss on Tuesday, but would love to start the discussion here. And with, with that, Mayor, I'll throw it into your court to add any other context.
Thank you, Jordan. I just really had a couple of questions. When, when the Medford letter came out and the idea that we would present to the board a similar letter that as a response, I still think that that's a really good idea and I look forward to talking about that, but I, I just wanted to kind of queue up the idea that I don't think the Medford letter goes far enough. And one of the things I'm concerned about is I mean, basically they're asked, the, as I understand it now, they're asking for an external investigation on the relationship between, I mean, generally the relationship between Rogue Retreat and Set Free Church and, and the the conversion therapy piece. But because we've heard all along about operational issues on the gateway and even rumors, but pretty qualified rumors about racist practices, I feel like our, our, and that's not me saying that I think that there are racist practices, but I do think that there's enough enough reason to be concerned that that is a possibility where I would hope our, our ask would, would go a little bit further in the investigation where people who have resided at the gateway or been part of Rogue Retreat in, in some other way would have an opportunity to have safe harbor interviews. And just from the standpoint that I think it's going to be important for them to do an internal investigation that includes the voice of the participants. And if, it seems to me that if we, if we ask for if we ask for the investigation to include potential accusations of the treatment of some of the residents at the gateway, that maybe they could do safe harbor interviews and, and we could either eliminate that as a possibility or, or, you know, worst case scenario is that it actually turns out to be true. So that's, that's my thought. And I just wanted to, I, I wanted us to discuss that, but not as we're standing over the letter. And that's why I was hoping that I could, I mean, bring it up before either on Monday or whatever. I actually thought the letter was going to come on this meeting, but the reason I wanted to talk about it tonight instead of waiting until Tuesday was because I, I think it's better for us to just talk about it. And, and if there's any change in thinking that we could just build it into the letter for that night. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Greider?
Yeah, I, Jordan, I'm wondering if you have more information if you're connected with Medford recently, like within the last 24 hours, but I think, you know, internal investigations are always kind of problematic, but I'm under the understanding that there, that the third party, so Rogue Retreat is is hiring a third party to do the investigation. So is that correct? Or do you know any more about how the investigation piece is working? And then just to say that I do know there's a letter on its way to city council in Tura from some local nonprofits asking or requesting that a full investigation be completely separate from that it's an external investigation that's done.
Yeah, you know, one of the reasons why I haven't brought the letter, a draft to you all yet, aside from capacity, is I'm trying to seek out the information of what actually is currently going on. I have not yet received clarity on the steps that have been taken. I do know that the Medford City Council did discuss this last night. And I know that they're working on some more internal topics that they're figuring out for their best to pass forward in their requests. So I'm hoping to learn more come this Monday. But I'd also like to open it up for anyone on the board if they would like to be the drafters of the letter. You know, I'm, I'm always happy to provide a draft that you all can edit work off of, but if someone feels more connected, I would love to hand it off as well.
And the letter, when we're talking about a letter, it's coming from Tura or as a contractor with Rogue Retreat asking Rogue Retreat to have an extra, or, or what, what exactly is the ask in the letter? And is it directed to Tura? I mean, to Rogue Retreat? Sorry.
Yeah, so that's actually what will be up to the board. I think I'll put some options in the letter that you all could choose. But it is if the board would like to call for action to be taken by the Rogue Retreat Board. You know, those actions that I've heard from other community groups could be anything from requesting a third-party investigation. You know, the mayor's input a third-party investigation that involves the direct input from folks receiving Rogue Retreat services. It could be asking Executive Director to go on admin leave during the course of that investigation. You know, there's, there's a host of requests I think can be made. I think it's up to the Tura Board about what those requests are. And I, you know, the most common form that I'm aware of in these scenarios is to submit a letter to the board. But if anyone else has other ideas or actions, you know, of course, that is I'm open for discussion.
I do really support the, the idea that the mayor brought up about speaking with the residents and those that are involved directly as part of the investigation. And I hope that people would feel safe in doing that.
Yeah, I, I just want to be clear that what I'm suggesting is that, that they provide an opportunity for people to speak up.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to just state my support for that as well. I think it's important that the that those using Rogue Retreat Services or participating in their programs have a chance to be heard by the third-party entity doing the investigation. I think that's really important.
And I have to clarify, I do not know if a third-party has been hired to do an investigation or not. That is one of the things that I am trying to confirm.
Counselor Penomra?
Yeah, I also heard the mayor say that to broaden the investigation, not, not just questions about discrimination based on issues of LGBTQ, but also potentially racism. I think, I think that, you know, for groups that are providing these services, trust is, is so important. And any type of discrimination or, you know, making people feel unwelcome erodes that trust. So I think both broadening the investigation to include things like racism as well as, as the mayor suggested, Safe Harbor, so that residents do have the ability to provide input with the firm belief that they, there will not be retaliated against for anything they might say.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with the points that you've all made. And I believe that the Medford request was for an internal investigation to happen around any type of discrimination that was related to Set Free Ministries and Rogue Retreat. So I think that it should be broad. And I agree that if we also send a letter, it should be very broad. I wonder if there's any type of language that we could add about the agency that they contract with to do this investigation. I mean, it just seems like I don't know if that's a standard practice, if like there's an issue like this that comes up, if the agency that has the issue usually gets to just decide who does the investigation. That just seems a little bit off. It sounds like maybe the mayor has an idea about that, but if there was some way that we could look at just making that as objective and not connected to the affected agencies as possible, that would be great.
First, I just want to make something clear because I'm really sensitive about investigations and, and employment practice investigations. And what I want to clarify is that just because we speaking for myself, because I feel the need to broaden the topic to all forms of discrimination. Well, so thank you, Counsel Perry Miller, for clearing that up. I'm not in any way saying that I believe that they're true. I just like to wait for the investigation. I believe that employment practice investigations are a sacred process that are designed for good outcomes. That said, when we were talking about it with Jordan last week, and by the way, Jordan, you know, brought this discussion forward to us, Counsel, Counsel Penomra and myself in a, in our meeting. Thank you for that, Jordan. Jordan did mention that I think, I think it was you that mentioned that we, we get a chance to review the investigation and the process that they use. And if we don't find either the process that they use or the outcome satisfactory in, in any way, and I'm not saying looking for the answers that we're looking for, but, but just a lack of integrity in the process, if we see that, then I, I think it gives us plenty of opportunity to take action and up to and including a 90-day notice that we're, we're disengaging in the relationship on the gateway. If the, if the investigation isn't clear enough, I don't know if that's enough for y'all, but it certainly is enough for me that we have an opportunity to say, say, say what we're looking for to be investigated and then, and then be able to review that investigation for integrity of process.
Thanks for that, Mayor. Well said. Counselor Greider?
Yeah, I watched the Medford City Council meeting last night and there was quite a bit of that same type of discussion. Just that they would want to, because they were actually signing a new contract with Rogue Retreat last night amongst all of these things. So they just were really, it's just was really important that they be able to see the full investigation and that be able to see the full investigation um and that then they could um could void any contract with them if if there was anything that came up that wasn't um didn't feel right to them. So I I think that's a really good um thing to put into writing as soon as we can, if if we are um proposing something to their board, I think that that's a really great point.
Just want to make one final point that um that if practices like, if there's an indication that practices like this are at the top level. Um, I appreciate the point that uh Counsel Greider just made uh in reporting what Medford talked about, that it's important for us to look at, you know, um these kinds of behaviors are systemic in general and um and it's important for us to have an opportunity to hear from it. I think it's only the people who are receiving the services that would be able to say that it's you know, if there were systemic issues, that they would be able to relay those systemic issues, and I think that's an important um piece of this. Um, this whole discussion is this, this might not, you know, it's important to find out that it's uh that if it's more than one person, if that is behavior is actually happening to give folks a chance to do that.
Anyone else?
Want to say one more time, uh, Jordan, thank you for um, thank you for your thoughtfulness on this issue. I think you've been really um balanced and firm on your approach and and I'm really grateful for your leadership.
Um, so I will prepare a letter on Monday and hope to get you all a draft um Monday afternoon would be my goal so that you can review and come with recommended edits um to discuss on Tuesday.
All right. Thank you so much for that. Um if there are no uh comments on this, is there anything else, uh, anything else on our agenda for the evening? Okay. Thank you all for a uh productive meeting and um look forward to seeing you all on Tuesday. And with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jordan. Thanks, Jason. Thanks, everybody.
Sophie.
I, it is absolutely appropriate for you to remind me to put a back window.
Hey, Mayor, Hector had to slip out really quick.